Good evening and welcome to the April 27th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. If we could, please stand, face a flag somewhere as we stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Which stands. Under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we've been doing the last few weeks, if we could just have a quick moment of silence for everybody suffering or that has passed during this pandemic. Thank you very much. Alright, we're gonna begin the meeting with the meeting minutes of April 20th, 2020, as we have no correspondence. I know they've been reviewed prior by some of the members. Let me see if we got everybody on there. Did everybody have a me- uh, time to review their meeting minutes?
Do you need a motion to accept?
I do.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes of April 20th, 2020 have been passed with the comments as noted earlier. We're gonna move into the regular portion of the meeting. Uh, first I want to announce that Faith Bible Church is no longer on the agenda. Uh, the decision was made by the applicant to pull off. So we're gonna move to number two on the agenda, which is the Taco Bell in, uh, Public Informational Hearing. So do I have a motion to open the public informational hearing?
Motion.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, for the record, my name is Paul Dumont. I'm a senior designer with JMC. We are the civil engineers on the project. Um, because this is a public hearing, I'll just begin by, by giving a brief overview of the project. Just gonna share my screen. Hopefully everyone can see that. Uh, so the project site is located at 3605 Crampon Road in town. Uh, it's about a quarter mile west of the intersection of Crampon Road and the Bear Mountain State Parkway. Uh, the site is a little over an acre in size and is bordered by, uh, Crampon Road to the north. Um, uh, the car lot and veterinary center to the west. Uh, vacant land and the park side corner shopping center to the east. And old Crampon Road, uh, to the south. Uh, the applicant is proposing to, uh, reoccupy the existing building with a Taco Bell, fast food restaurant and another to be determined retail tenant with associated building and site improvements. Um, as far as the site improvements go, uh, the applicant is proposing to reconfigure the existing parking lot and add a drive-through lane and new curb cut exit to the site. Um, the applicant will be repaving the existing parking lot. Uh, the entire site will be getting new curving and sidewalk. Uh, in addition, uh, the applicant is proposing some landscaping improvements, uh, and lighting improvements. Um, there's an existing stormwater management, uh, facility in the rear of the property that will be rehabilitated and restored as part of this. Uh, and there's also wet one mitigation proposed as well. Uh, just to give the board an update, we met last week, uh, with the Ibaka, uh, to discuss the building design and the site landscaping and the site lighting. Uh, we had a very productive meeting. Um, the board did have some minor comments which we'll be working to address. Uh, and in addition, um, we are, uh, hoping to meet with the Conservation Board uh, in the coming weeks as well, uh, to, to continue the process there. So, uh, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, Paul, can you talk about the, the back area? The, uh-
Yes.
Please. Thank you.
Uh, this, you're referring to the stormwater management area?
Yes, exactly. The rehab.
Uh, so the, the existing property, um, uh, when it was originally developed or when one of the parking lot expansions was done, uh, the property was fit with, uh, what was called and what was designed as a biofilter swale, uh, which is a stormwater management practice that, um, serves to treat stormwater runoff from, from the parking lot and the building and, uh, provides water quality for that runoff. Uh, so that was implemented in the early 2000s, I believe. Um, but over time, uh, if you can see here, it's hard to see in this aerial because, uh, this was taken in a leaf-off condition. Uh, over time, that practice has become overgrown with invasive species. And, um, a lot of the original plantings that were designed in that area are no longer there. They, they were overtaken. And that area has lost its function in, in terms of, of stormwater management practice. Uh, so what we're proposing to do, and, and we actually consulted with the original, uh, landscaping designers, Evans Associates, who, who had worked on this property in the early 2000s. Um, we are proposing to rehabilitate that practice, go in by hand, remove all the invasive species, uh, and then, uh, re-implement and restore, um, that the landscaping as it was originally designed. Uh, so a lot of what you see in this area in terms of landscaping is what, uh, Beth Evans and her firm had originally designed for that area and, and, you know, is no longer there. Um, so that's, that's our intention there is to just re- restore that area and its function as a stormwater management practice. Um, particularly, you know, given that we are working with the New York City DEP on this site as well.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the drainage under the property?
Sure. Uh, the existing property, um, the, the property has an existing stormwater culvert that runs beneath the parking lot. Um, it is a, an 84-inch pipe, uh, which carries, flows, uh, from a stream which begins, uh, on the other side of Crampon Road, uh, in, in the state lands. Uh, so there's a stream that begins there. Uh, it comes across Crampon Road at one point and it actually enters a head wall, um, on the other side of the veterinary property shown, uh, ju- just off the plan here. Uh, so from there, that stream is piped in this culvert. Uh, it comes across the car lot and the veterinary center property, uh, to a manhole here. And then it comes, uh, across, uh, the applicant's property, uh, where it daylights at a head wall here.
Okay. And you also want to talk briefly about the, um, the work you were doing with the Fire Protection District?
Uh, sure. So as, as part of this, uh, application, um, we had coordinated and spoken with the, uh, Fire Prevention Bureau and, uh, the Fire, um, inspector about their concerns with, with, uh, uh, fire hydrant accessibility in this area. And, uh, one of the things that they highlighted was that, um, you know, fire hydrant accessibility in this area along Crampon Road is an issue for them. Um, as, uh, Crampon Road, uh, I would say about a, a half mile or more stretch of it does not have any water main or fire hydrants. Uh, so we had worked with them and coordinated with them and, uh, the applicant is proposing to install a fire hydrant on the, on the property, um, which will, uh, be of use to the fire department, uh, not only for this property, but for other properties in the area. Um, and we'll, we'll be connecting to a water main on Old Crampon Road, uh, in order to install that.
Okay. And if you could talk about the parking?
Sure. Um, so the, uh, projects, um, we're proposing, I believe, 40 parking spaces total, uh, where 49 parking spaces are required. Um, and, uh, your board has the ability to, uh, waive up to 25% of the required parking spaces. Um, and, uh, we submitted some data which, which, uh, supports that as well, uh, from Taco Bell, which shows that, uh, based on the number of seats here and, uh, and the, um, mainly drive-through nature of their business, that, uh, we believe that this site will be adequately parked, uh, for the use.
Okay. And there was some concerns about, uh, the sewer? The flow, the, the capacity? Has that all been addressed?
Uh, right. So we, we met with Mr. Quinn, uh, the town engineer and we had, we had discussed that. Um, so yes, so we, we believe that we've addressed, uh, we've addressed that item and, uh, essentially the site was previously, um, you know, time restaurant and stat fitness and is now going to be, um, a, a fast food use with, with a, uh, you know, to be determined retail tenant. So what we did was we used, uh, some, um, uh, data from the, the state DEC, uh, that, that, uh, engineers use to project, um, sanitary sewer flows for, for these types of uses. And we, uh, met with Mr. De Quinn and, and we did a, uh, comparison, you know, existing to proposed, uh, what we're expecting to see here. And, um, it's in the same, uh, realm of the existing use. So Mr., Mr. Quinn was satisfied with that.
Okay. And I know there was some, you with the town engineer looked at the alignment of the, uh, fast food lane or the, uh, drive-through window lane?
Right. So what, uh, what we had done, um, just to, uh, you know, ease vehicle movements through that drive-through lane, um, you know, at one point there was a question or concern of, um, you know, the ability or how easily a, a vehicle can maneuver through that lane. So what we did was we opened up some of the radii, uh, throughout the lane, uh, especially coming into the lane here. Uh, where you see a kind of meander toward the building here, where we're, we're coming around an existing, uh, gas meter in service. Uh, and then past the building, what we did was we opened that up, uh, so that it would be, uh, wider. And we also opened the radii up so that, uh, a passenger vehicle and, and other vehicles that might access this drive-through, uh, would have an easier time getting in and out of that.
Okay. So before we do go to the public, just so everybody understands, if you do have a question, uh, you want to go to the chat box and either text or, alright, I guess it would be, call, text, email, uh, communicate-
Message.
Robin, message with Robin, or there's a way to put your hand up if you have a question? And, oh, I see John's, and then she'll let you in. Uh, before we go to the public though, um, Thomas, I just want to make sure all the notices went out for this correctly?
Notices did go out, uh, yes.
Okay. So they all been checked. Uh, any questions or comments from the board? I know this has been in front of us for some time now.
Hey Rich, I do have one, one question. It has to do with the traffic flow, Paul, you were just talking about. I presume from the drawing here that that dark gray area right at the center or so, is that the point where people would place their order?
Uh, yes. Yep. That, that's a little, uh, landscape island where, where people would place their order. There, there's a menu board and a, uh, you know, a speaker and order confirmation board is what it's called.
And so what is it? It looks like, it looks like a driver going into that spot could bail out and go left into the parking lot. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes, Rob. That, that's correct. So, um, i- if a, if a driver enters the drive-through and wants to leave for any reason, uh, they could use this, uh, bypass here. Uh, in addition, uh, i- if someone pulls up and orders something, let's say they order, you know, a very large amount of food and, uh, you know, they'll be directed to, uh, use that lane and, and use one of these parking spaces here to wait and, uh, and to not obstruct the drive-through lane.
But you don't think there'll be any confusion if somebody traveling the opposite direction? Like, or can they exit? I mean, you can't really exit through a drive-through lane, right? But if somebody could go and then make a left?
Uh, yes, you're correct. Uh, there is, um, and this was highlighted at the last meeting, where we are going to be proposing signage, uh, in this area, uh, some, you know, do not enter signs and other, other types of signage which are gonna help, um, you know, people that access the site so they're, they're clear on, on the way that things are flowing. Um, and, uh, that's, you know, what we're thinking of doing there to prevent, you know, people from doing that.
Okay. Good. That's all I had. Thanks, Rich. Thanks, Paul.
Any other questions from the board?
No questions.
John, are we missing anything? Robin?
No, and I do not see any, um, anyone asking me questions at this moment.
Okay. So this is the-
I actually have one question. I just wanted to, I, I noticed that the drive-through is a right turn only, but the other, the other is, uh, both, uh, left or right, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And I, I, I seem to remember, is that ex- is that where the road widens or starts to widen a little bit?
Yeah, there is a, uh, yeah, the road does kind of widen out here. There, there's a, uh, fairly wide shoulder in the, in this area.
There's a white line showing there.
Right. Okay. And that's always been a left turn, uh, access as well?
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
Anybody from the public, Robin?
Not that nobody's, nobody's, uh, noticing me.
Okay. Well, this is the first. This is the, uh, public informational. Um, obviously we're gonna move on in the process from this. Um, and there'll be the regular public hearing too. So that being said, no comment from the, uh, public. Do I have a motion to close the public informational hearing for the Taco Bell?
Motion.
We'll move.
So, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Alrighty. Or thank, thank you, everyone. Take care.
Be well, Paul. Alright, we're gonna move on to the next, uh, application. Uh, unfortunately, I think part of the, the notice was sent out late. So we'll, we'll open this public informational hearing, but we're gonna have to carry it open to the next meeting. That being said, do I have a motion to open the current site plan, public informational hearing?
Salute.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Top there's Joe.
Good evening. Um, hold on a second. For some reason I, I lost share, the ability to share my screen and I'll have to find it.
Uh, one second. There you go.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Joe Seprina, the Principal Site Design Consultants. This evening we are representing Correa Enterprises. And Correa Enterprises has a property at 250 East Main Street in Jefferson Valley. Let me just see here. Site, as you can see, is located at, right at the intersection of Route 6 and Formay Pack Street and East Main Street. Currently on the site, there are two buildings, uh, which have, contain commercial uses. One being the owner's, uh, uh, office of business as well as, uh, two other, uh, businesses that are, uh, working out of that site. And the proposal is to construct two 6,000 square foot storage buil- uh, buildings at the rear of the site for use by the owner and one of the tenants. So again, this is the existing survey for the property. You see the main entrances here, just right opposite the intersection. Uh, and I'm sorry, the property is so, Zone CC, which is country commercial in the front portion and, uh, R180, which is the rear portion of the property. So this, this is the dividing line of the two zones. So, uh, as I was saying, the, the current, the existing driveway comes in, uh, off of, um, East Main Street, right across from the intersection. Uh, there's, there's existing parking area here and parking area in this location. And as I said, you have two buildings that are existing on the site. As you can see, um, this portion of the site, or mostly the rear portion of the site is wooded. And this front corner here, which houses the, the, the building and drive, the two buildings in the driveway are, uh, fully improved. So as I said, the proposal is to, to, uh, construct two, uh, one and a half story, uh, metal, prefab, prefab metal storage buildings. Um, they will be accessed off an independent driveway, which will come off the main driveway here. That driveway will be 20 foot wide. Um, we're not certain at this point, 100% certain on the configuration of the entries to the, to the building, but right now, uh, from what, uh, the owner is thinking of doing is to have three garage doors in the front of each building and then, uh, an independent driveway into each. There is a area in between the two buildings, which will be for, uh, turnaround area for trucks. Uh, whether they need, you know, whether, what, if they're making a delivery back here or, um, if they're shipping something out, they can, they can, uh, back into this area, do a K-turn and make their way out. As far as improvements are concerned, as you can see, there's gonna be some grading required, um, at the rear of the two buildings. The back part of the foundation for these two buildings are going to act as a retaining wall, uh, to reduce the, we've done that to reduce the amount of grading that's gonna be required, uh, into the slope here. The, um, conceptually for stormwater, we're, we're planning on putting something in this location to, uh, manage the stormwater from the two buildings and the proposed upper part of the driveway. And the lower part of the driveway will be facilitated with some, some type of stormwater management, uh, facility here. Uh, unfortunately, because of, um, the COVID situation, we have not been able to proceed any further on the design of this because, uh, because our client is, uh, trapped out of the country right now. The only utilities to be brought to the building will be power. There'll be no, uh, water or sewer brought to these, uh, buildings. They're gonna be strictly for storage use only. The, um, we're showing the limit of disturbance. As you can see, this is the lim- the proposed limited disturbance. We're trying to keep it as minimized as possible, uh, to provide some buffer for this, this property and this property. We are gonna propose to put some dense landscape screening al- along the edge of the limited disturbance. This is the profile of the proposed driveway that will serve as the two buildings. As you can see, it meets the maximum and minimum allowable driveway grades for a commercial driveway. And as you can see, the cuts are minimal. So we, we worked with the grade as much as we could. Um, the, the deepest cut is at this point here, which is approximately five feet, just less than five feet at that point there. And it diminishes as you get down to, down to this part of the driveway. Uh, not to say this is the exact building that my client is looking to put up, but it's gonna be something similar to this. Again, because he is not, uh, in the country, he, he, he cannot, you know, we have not been able to get together on this, but I have a general idea of what he's looking to do. Um, it would be, you know, a metal frame building. It would, would be simple, but, but, uh, have a nice look to it. This area below the, uh, the siding would most likely be some type of masonry, uh, whether it's, uh, block or brick, decorative block or brick. So at this point, this is, uh, as you stated, this is a, uh, PIH, um, and this is a, uh, preliminary site plan review. Um, we're looking to move forward on with our review once we can, uh, dig into some more of the, um, engineering details, at which point we'll come back for, uh, our formal public hearing. Do you have any questions at this point?
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Just move over to the board.
Yeah, I, I have a question, just for my own information. Um, the applicant says that he's gonna use one of the buildings for his own use. What kind of business is he in?
He, he's, he's a contractor.
Oh, so the what, machine and, and?
Yeah, he'll probably pa- park, um, his trucks or equipment in there. Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's allowable under the zoning?
Yes.
Okay. So there you are.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Oh, comment?
John, are we missing anything?
Uh, I just want to point out that, uh, given its, uh, location and that it is actually a country commercial zone that, uh, the design of the garages and storage buildings should possibly be part of your approval so that you do get what you expect and what is expected of that location and zone.
How do you feel the current design, if it's something similar to that works, John?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, something like that. Yeah, good.
Okay, Jim, anything?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alright, we'll open it up to the public now. Anybody's got any thoughts, any concerns, please reach out to Robin so we can get you on. Anything, Robin?
Um, I don't see anyone. I need you to, um, click the raise hand button if you'd like to speak.
I think John Flynn's trying to get in there. Can we unmute John?
Go ahead, John.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Uh, no, I'm, I'm not here for this particular, uh, project.
Okay, so I'm looking feverishly. How are you, Jim? Alright, if there's no other, uh, comments from the public, uh, we're gonna have to, again, hold this open, uh, just to allow the, the noticing to be appropriate. Alright, we're gonna move on to the next.
Wait, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Susan would like to speak. One second, Susan?
Hello, I'm June.
Hi, Susan.
Hi there. Um, I just have some questions. Um, Joe, you mentioned that this is a forested area. I'd like to know, is the tree permit required? Uh, that would be, uh, ten, at least 10 trees, um, and possibly if there's a, um, assessment of any disturbance to a protected woodland. Um, and if, if it does qualify for needing a tree permit, do you have an estimate as to the number of trees, uh, to be removed? And has the application been referred to the Tree Advisory Commission for its review? And has any preliminary thoughts been given to the mitigation for the, for the lost trees and possible disturbance to the woodland? These are just questions.
At this point, we have filed a tree permit, but we don't have the detail yet that we need, um, to assess the amount of trees that are gonna be taken out. Uh, once an updated survey is done with the tree locations, we'll be able to address all that.
Will that be submitted to the Tree Advisory Commission early, early in the process? So that they can weigh in and then, once you have the number of trees and also potential disturbance to woodlands, uh, protected woodlands, will a tree mitigation plan be prepared? And again, submitted early for the tree commission to, to review?
A- as soon as we have it prepared, we will submit it to planning and I guess, uh, they will distribute it as required.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Is there Robin?
Um, Jake Hopstein would like to know if a sprinkler system is necessary? Jake Hopstein would like to know if a sprinkler system is necessary? And if yes, then water will be required?
We'll have to refer that to the building department, I would imagine, the art.
Yeah. I I'm not, I can't answer that with 100% surety. I know the type of construction it's going to be. It will not require forest sprinkler, but possibly the the type of materials to be stored in there or may require it. I'll have to find that out.
Anyone else, Robin?
I don't think so.
All right, so as we said, we're going to have to hold this up. Oh, what happened? We're going to have to hold this open and we'll have to deal with it at the next meeting. So Joe will be ready by then, right? With the notices?
The notices were submitted. We just we just got them out late.
Okay.
So, but you do have everything.
All right. Do we have to take any other actions at this time, Jim?
Nothing else.
Okay. All right, then, we're going to move on to the next item. Another public informational hearing. This is for Nantucket Sound Sons LLC. Again, same situation where the notices went out late, so we'll again have to hold this open. Do I have a motion to open the public informational hearing?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Okay, you're on.
Am I still sharing, Robin?
No, you have to start a new share now. Looks good.
What's that?
Looks good.
That's it?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I just have a problem on my end. Hold on. Okay, we good now? You can see that, right?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Joseph Reena, the principal site design consultant and project engineer for Nantucket Sound Sons LLC. This is a public informational hearing for a preliminary site plan. With me tonight is the owner of the property, Patrick Murphy, the project architect, Joseph Thompson, the landscaper and the landscape architect Frank Juliana. The the site is located on Kear Street, at 385 Kear Street. This is the intersection of Kear Street and 118. This is 118 headed into town to the north, to the south. This is Allen Avenue opposite here. This is the drive that takes you into the Caramount facility. The site is currently vacant. It's it's a little more than a third of an acre. It's 15,807 square feet. And it's proposed to and it's at Zone C2R and it's proposed to design or to construct a building that is is within the spirit of the C2R zone. So the proposal to construct a multi-level building, it's and and the building, the building we're at, well, this part of the site, which is the east part of the site or south part of the site and the north side of this part of the site will act independently. So the proposed building is going to be have a footprint of 2,800 square feet on the upper two levels and 2,567 square feet on the lower level. This is the access point off of Kear Street, which takes you into Caramount. We'll have a driveway that comes off of that. We'll have seven parking spaces in this area here for the lower level use. The lower level use is supposed to be commercial use or retail use of some type. This, there's a loading zone provided here. There's a little patio area here. It's for tables and this is where the trash enclosure will be. This, these three parking spots here will be elevated and supported by a short retaining wall. As you make yourself, as you make your way around the site, you're going up the hill now to a higher level or to the second level of the building. And this this level here, you have 18 parking spaces and this level is to access two floors of residential apartments with three residential apartments on each floor. So you'll have a total of six residential apartments above the retail space in two levels. Again, this parking area will be supported at this end by retaining wall. This is where the traction closure closure will be. That will be solely dedicated to the residential properties. You've got a little commute common area here for the residences with some tape, some tape. Some tables are shown here. It might be benches, we don't know yet, but at this point, we've got a little common area here where people can gather. As you can see, this slopes down. There's a retaining wall that holds this upper area up and it slopes down to this lower patio area here. There is a continuation of the pedestrian connection proposed from the Caramount site. So you're coming across the Caramount site. There's a crosswalk here that exists already. And then you've got an existing sidewalk on this edge of the the driveway access. We're going to continue that pedestrian access out. You'll have to take some steps here to get down to this lower elevation and it'll take you up to the crosswalk, which is up at the intersection of Kear Street and 118. As I said, the parking the proposed parking, there are 18 parking spaces in the upper level and seven in the lower for a total of 25. The distribution of the parking is four parking spaces per thousand for the commercial use and 2.2 spaces per dwelling unit for the residential use. At this point, I'm going to ask Frank to come to come in and talk about the landscape plan. Unless you have any questions, I'm going to go to Frank.
Good evening.
Are you on?
I'm on.
Okay.
This already appeared in, we presented in front of Abaca. The plan is pretty extensive as far as landscaping. Their one comment was to actually reduce the height of the plants at the entrance to Caramount. And the reason is they wanted to. I had it originally totally screened from the surrounding environment and Baca thought that it should be visible from the road because it is quite a beautiful building. So what we did was adjust the plantings to that are now going to be plants that don't get as high. However, the two trash bin areas, the one on the first one there that Joe's pointing to and the second still are heavily screened. As you can see, to the north, there's quite a bit of native woodland that's still existing between the parking lot and the and 118. That's going to be preserved and we're edging between the parking lot and the existing woodland with a native material that would normally be the second tier of plantings in the woods. So it won't look like you're just cut through a woodland and looking at the trunks of trees. So that is heavily planted with native material that are mainly that are all native material that will be under storey planting, going to about 10 to 12 feet tall. There's quite a bit of flowering material around the building since there's going to be two outdoor seating areas. The plant material that was used is the exact same palette that was used for Caramount. The idea here is so it would look consistent as one unified development and this shouldn't look like it's a separate parcel as by itself. So the exact same plant palette is used as Caramount, which are native material, no invasive species and the same size material as well, so it would look consistent. The west elevation of the building, that small planting strip is heavily planted. And that's so when you are driving up, the building is the highest point right there that that'll be screened and that's the heaviest screened area of the site besides the trash bins. If there's any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Frank. The area you talked about first that is along Kear Street, yes. So how high do you think those things are and can you describe what the species is?
Well, around the trash bins themselves, those are green giant orbivites. So they'll get up to the, you know, in this, in this area, they'll get up to about 12 feet tall. Because remember, that's also elevated, John. So they'll be totally screened from the day they're put in. Then the screening from where the trash bin starts all the way to the area of the four seating table areas, those would be flowering evergreen shrubs. Those are a hydrangea that will bloom all summer, provide rich green be attractive from Kear Street. It won't just be a hedge of plantings. The same plant will be used along with evergreen hollies. When I say holly, they're not like we think of the Christmas holly, the native ilex glaber, which is a small leaved holly that can take the salt spray. Even if, you know, I always take into consideration where they're plowing snow, where the snow is going to be plowed onto. And in those three parking spaces there, there's only one spot to plow it and it's towards Kear Street. So whatever planted there is flexible enough that when it gets piled on, it will respond back in the spring and it won't be broken up and splintered up. So to answer your question, where those three parking spots are, those are a mixture of the ilex glaber, which is native and the flowering hydrangea quick fires.
And how tall are they roughly?
They're going to get up to eventually up to about six feet. Remember, Joe, what is the height of the wall already?
So it looks like the the wall is at its maximum, it's about two and a half feet.
Yeah. And originally we had plantings that would have been, you know, up to 10 feet tall there. The Abaca felt that it was just too high and they wanted visibility of the building. So that's why we re set these smaller plantings.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And so we're paying attention to the heights and in the coming weeks, we'll probably just take a closer look at that to make sure that we're getting every, you know, we understand exactly what we're getting. So so thank you. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Thompson, the project architect. So I'm going to stop my share.
Evening, everybody. Joseph Thompson, architect for the project. I'll start a screen share with a small presentation. We have drawings that were previously presented and well received by Abaca. Can everybody see this? Is the building visible?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
So the building's been designed to be complementary to the nearby recently completed Caramount building. To Frank's point, we want this to feel like one unified development and block. Materiality is the same, horizontal platform, siding, brick, they projected gable forms with skirt roofs, large double hung two over two windows. And the forms, large reverse gables and some of the shed dormers. To Joe's point, it's a mixed use building with ground floor commercial and the lower level parking. And then the six residential units are accessed from an upper level rent entrance, three on the second floor, three on the third floor. HVAC units will all be screened from view. We have a depressed roof in the center so they're not be usable from the street. And we've tried to create a building that will hopefully nicely complement the overall development once it's constructed. Turn it back over to the board if any questions.
I have a quick question. The fourth floor is just attic space, right? Unfinished?
Correct.
Joe, you all done with the presentation?
I am, unless unless we'd like to walk through any of the floor plans or elevations in more detail, we have those, we have those in it.
Do you have elevations going around the building, Joe?
I can scroll through these and comment on them briefly. So this is the first floor plan for the commercial suites. Currently it's set up for two. Theoretically, it could be one larger combined tenant depending on who ends up occupying the space. The second floor plan has three apartment units, each are two bedrooms. The bedrooms are all around the perimeter with access to windows. The living spaces, we've tried to accommodate generous living spaces that have an open concept kitchen, living dining area. They all have in-unit laundry. There's a common stair where that'll lead up to the third floor where again, there's a replicated floor plan of those three units that are identical. The roof plan, as mentioned, provides for a depressed roof area that will allow the mechanical rooms, units to be hidden from view from the street. The elevations themselves, indicative of what you saw in the rendering. This is the commercial facade that fronts the entrance on Kear Street. The side, the back residential entrance, which the building only appears as a two-story as opposed to a three-story as its earth burn. And a number of details are represented to Abaca. It's critical that a lot of the trim details and the proportions of these windows and doors are done well to create a convincingly historic building. So took some care to put together window details for the double hungs, residential entrance detail, storefront details that are similar to historic type storefronts, not not commercial aluminum storefront. Covered porch details that have crowns around the the beams, half round gutters, columns with chamfered edges and caps and bases. The tenant signage is specified to be uniform, historic type font, aluminum channel letter. And we're planning to externally illuminate that with concealed lighting. So that way that that sign softly glows but with no internal illumination. We have roof brackets that again should complement the other building that was recently constructed adjacent. And this is a picture of the Caramount building, just for reference, again, as our material palette is is identical in a lot of ways and we're seeking to have these two buildings complement each other.
Rich, I'd like to add that we were hoping or anticipating on having a preliminary lighting plan for this evening, but it just didn't happen. But we will be using the same lighting scheme that was used on the Caramount building on this site as far as site lighting and building mount lighting. So at this point, we will, we're still digging into some of the, you know, hard engineering part of the project. We've got to get the stormwater analysis worked out. We're, it's pending testing with the DEP, but but that's on hold right now. So we can't move move forward with that, although we do have preliminary testing that gives us an idea. We don't want to move forward until we've had the DEP out there. We have a little more information to gather. We still have have to complete our tree survey. We have a little more information to gather, we still have, have to complete our tree survey. But at this point, we feel that this is the pretty, pretty hard, fast direction we're going with, with the site. And subject to, you know, that final engineering, we'll, we'll be presenting this in a more, as I said, hard form in the future.
Okay, thank you, Joe. All right, so we're going to go, if I could ask the public just to keep themselves on mute until we call on you. We will call on you. I know there's a bunch of people that want to talk to this application. But first, I'm going to go to the board. Any comments or concerns from the board?
I think it's a beautiful building and I'd like to commend them on not only preserving a portion of the woodland along 118, but complimenting it with a shrub layer, you know, before it meets the parking lot.
I have a comment. I recently, I believe we just recently received a comment letter from Westchester County. Is the issue of sidewalks around the Kear Street side of the property. This is one of the things I mentioned at an early meeting. My concern with this project is that it's maximizing the space on the site that's being used and losing any neighborhood amenities that might be out there. And Westchester County points out correctly in my mind that we should consider requiring a sidewalk connection on Kear Street to allow pedestrian flow in that area. And I was wondering what the Alphkins thought was in response to the Westchester County memo.
Well, first of all, I, I did not get a chance to see that memo, so. But in response to that particular point, there is a sidewalk on the other side of, the other side of Kear Street that goes all the way from the entrance to the Yorktown Green up to 118. And there are crosswalks. Let me, Joe, can you un-share?
Just stop that share.
Thank you. So there, there is a sidewalk that runs up this entire edge of Kear Street here. You've got a crosswalk here, you've got a crosswalk here. And we're providing through access, as I said, from, from the west up through the site and up to the, up to the corner there. We had at this point not anticipated extending the sidewalk any further down. We thought it might, would be a redundancy to do that.
Joe, do you think there's an opportunity to connect from the corner of Kear and 118 into the upper parking lot?
There is, right, right here.
That's already there.
I, I mean, without the stairs, I mean up a little further, yes, in that area, right there.
Too, too much of a, we looked at that, John, let me, let me just take a look. But I think there was too much of a gray change there. Yeah, so you could see, you've got one, two, three, four, four feet of gray change there. There's no way you can do an ADA accessible ramp. We, we would have to maybe come out, come out and hug this. The bottom of this slope here, and then possibly, but then, then we're just dumping out into the parking lot. That, that could be explored instead of running it this way.
Yeah, but then you're going into the woodland area.
Well, we definitely will be going into the woodlands there because that comes out, out here. It's something we could talk about, you know, exploring. But again, then it's just going to dump you out into the parking lot.
All right, so we'll have to talk about that further, thank you, Aaron. Anybody else from the board? Well, if there's nothing else from the board, John, were we missing anything?
Not at this time, I think we have everything for now.
Okay, Jim, any issues?
No, as soon as the engineering stormwater comes in, I think you're ready for a public hearing.
Okay. All right, at this point, we're going to open up to the public. I know there's people that want to speak to this, so if you could wave at Robin, she will get you in. I think Mara is trying to get in there, Robin.
Right, I, I don't see the little hand.
Okay, Rob got you in, you're on, Mara.
Okay. I'm a long time resident of Yorktown Heights, have lived in the same house since 1966 on Howard Mill Road. I've seen a lot of development that has taken place in the Heights area, been part of some of the subcommittees on the planning board years and years and years ago. However, I think that this plan for this site is too massive and is out of step with the community. Definitely, if you go to Caremount, and I'm a customer of Caremount, on some days, every single parking space is filled on that particular site. So if you're talking about some retail businesses, I don't think that the owners or developers thought about what the retail situation is in the Heights. No one is going to go up and drive there to some little store. Just take a look at what's happening on Underhill Avenue, Wishes and the other new little barber shop. And then you can go up and down the little shopping center that's there. The big shopping center right next to it is empty. So how are you going to develop small stores that are going to want to rent space there and have customers come in there when they're not going to be seen? I think this is too massive for the site. I don't agree with the residential area at all. I don't think we need any more apartments in the Heights area. We're overloaded already and two possible more developments coming, one being the Wyon property and some of the others. So I know that the planners have looked at this before, and John, I know him, he's looked at things before. I just don't think residential use, it's in there at all, not at all. And it's not going to be good for the people that would have to rent and live there. I think it's too massive a development for that small, small, small space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think John Flynn wanted to speak on this. Yep, there he is. You're on muted, John, you're on.
Okay, I think I'm good, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, hello guys, all the familiar faces there, good to see you. Let's see, this is an interesting time to talk about, about town planning. All the planning schools a year ago were teaching us how, how urban sprawl and private automobile transportation were bad things. And here, that's what's protecting us from the virus. So with that world turned upside down, I'll, I'll try and make some comments that are relevant to our new, the new times that we live in. I, I think a couple of positive things about, that I see in the site are, one, I, I, I like the fact that it provides much needed rental housing, even though it's at more, I assume it's at market rate, that will be relatively affordable housing for, for the Yorktown area. And we, we certainly need all the housing we can get. Another positive about it is the mixed use aspect of the development with commercial and residential. I walk through here, a lot of times, I used to walk through after planning board meetings. At night, this is really a dead zone. And the residential component of the, of this project would bring human activity to the site and make it more vibrant and vital in other, when the business is closed down. The, the thing I think that makes this site, you could either say it's a negative or it's, as the past speaker did, or you could say it makes it an interesting project, is that the property is so small. I mean, three different sets of planning board members have reviewed this product, this property since the year 2000. And each time, they noted the challenges of developing it because of its small size, a third of an acre. In most parts of Yorktown, you wouldn't, the zoning ordinance wouldn't allow you to build a single family house on the property, much less several stores and a bunch of apartments. But it certainly, this is a different zoning situation and, and this is allowable. So I just have, I have several questions about the site and the plans that have been shown so far. I, I don't need answers to them, I just want, just want to ask questions. And if, if you want to talk about it, fine, if you don't, that's, that's okay with me. I'd just like the board to take these questions into consideration as you go forward with your plan, with your planning on the project. First one is when I looked at the site plans, I don't see a, a front yard or a side yard identified for the, for the site. And there are front yard and side yard setback requirements in this zone. So I, I, it would be helpful to ident, to pick a front yard and pick a side yard if it's not, it didn't appear clear to me which, which was which. Are there, another question is are there provisions for recreational space for the apartment residents? And are they equivalent to what's required in other multi-family building zones? In the zoning ordinance and other zones where you have multi-families, they do require a specific recreational space. Or given the height of the buildings, the three-story layout, are you planning to tether balloons at the site to demonstrate the actual height of the proposed building in relation to its surroundings? Is the dumpster enclosure on the revised site plan large enough to accommodate trash and recycling containers necessary for the residential and commercial occupants? In my, my new career working in bicycle shops, I've, I've, I've become sort of a, an amateur expert in dumpster enclosures and, and how much space is required for a relatively modest business. And I, I just was trying to figure whether you could put the, the number of dumpsters in those enclosures that these would be required. Let's see, with the number six on, on my list is, there's, on the site, I went back and looked at the, at the, what had been submitted by site design consultants and what had been submitted in previous, to previous planning boards. And I see that there's an easement reserved to town at the very lower tip on the corner of Kear Street and the entrance to the, to the Caremount property. And, and that, I, I think was there to basically protect the sight lines. And it, currently, there's about an eight foot high Claremont site sign parked on that, on that piece of land. And it looks like your plans have, have, have some retention basins or some sort of water management system on that corner of the property. And I'm wondering what, if you don't show that easement, has that, what's happened to the easement? Let's see, the apartment parking lot, the cars in the two spaces at the end of the parking lot, all the way down towards the Kear Street side of your parking lot, how do they back out of that exit? It looks like they'd have to back into the, into the garbage enclosure to get out. They don't seem to be viable parking spaces. And like, like John, I'm thrilled that your plans include saving those mature and healthy trees that stand between the apartment parking lot and 118 sidewalk. I think that will really be a nice amenity for the residents in the building. And I'm wondering what happens to the, if, if where that sidewalk comes down, you'll have to clear the trees that are right, that are along Kear Street. But then when the sidewalk stops, what happens to the mature, healthy trees that are currently right along the town? I, I guess it's on town property, between the town property and your property on Kear Street, heading down to the entrance to the Caremount office. Another question is how were you going to, I think, this is an important question, given that how we, I was on the planning board when we bungled the construction plans for the, the new Lowe's over on the, over on the other side of town and tied up property, tied up traffic all over the place as, as that property was developed and the Lowe's was built. So it's sort of a lesson to us all that we pay attention to how this, how you construct a site and build on it, that you don't create a nuisance for all the people trying to come and go. And so given the size of this site, how do you avoid interrupting traffic on Kear Street and also access to the parking lots of the adjacent office buildings during construction? And then one other question is, I, I think it's important, and I'll, I'll pose it as a question. Just explain the planning boards and the department's threshold for segmentation and explain why this project does not rise to that level. And that's all, my, my questions are no way to be critical of the work that site design consultants has done on this so far. I think they've, they've taken a, a, a challenging site and, and done the best you could do with it. Thank you.
Thanks, John, good questions. All right, as you, as John, I think you heard earlier, just so we remind everybody again, this is going to be held open because of the lateness of the notification. So I'm sure Joe Reno will be working on getting that to the next meeting, or the, the answers.
Okay, and I'll, I'll be happy for whoever's taking notes on the meeting, just to, just to send, to email those questions to Robin and she can direct them wherever.
Okay, thank you, John.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public? You're on mute, Robin.
I would note a comment from Jay Koffstein on the chat. He said he agrees with Mrs. Zidens that he's also a client at Caremount and has had trouble parking in that parking lot.
Interesting. Anybody else? Okay, so we're going to continue this at the next meeting, which will be next Monday. At this point, we're going to close the regular portion of the, of the meeting and move into the work session. You're all more than welcome to stay on board. I actually enjoy the work session, this format, because everybody's able to see when they share the screens exactly what's going on. So do I have a motion to close the regular portion and move into the work session, please?
Motion.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, we're going to move into the work session.